Ete iwi te naakautau na mai, haru mai ki au. Ki te fariwana ngonua katoa ki tau ranga te nee tiu nei ki to tatau fari ki te mana waroa. Mihinei te nginei ki a kautau kautau e fakarongo pikari mai na kiti waakaanga ki o kautau fari. Akenepaia kautau kainu ngaiyo kautau motukaia traiwana ki te fari. Kaitenpai, fakarongo pikari mai ti tiro mai na ki enai fakahairi te nee po. Waheu te nee takautau mokaia nairo e ruerae pihinei ki a kautau. Waheu ki a, e pakumehi noa, a he tuku i tatau fakarite mo te nepo. Katuku i takuranga tira maana noona fakahairi. Na raera kai te iwi, kai na ihi, kai na wehi, kai na tapu o to tatau moana. Potira kai na rohe rohe fakarongo pikari mai nei ki ta tatau mahi te nepo te na kautau, te na kautau, te na kautau. Katira ke tauku a iho te manaki tangaa te maheina rokailumi a tatau. Te wairua fakamari re a kuima a koro maia. Tauku a iho kirunga ki te na ki te no tatau pokaia kahanai. Ke taua no te maori kirunga ia tatau, ke taua no te rami maria iruenei fakahairi. Tūturuera ngonua fakamaua ki a tina, tina huiye, tai ki e. Te na raku tautau nairo e ruerae te nee. One of the crew here bringing this broadcast to you. I'm now going to hand over to my ranga tira Sam Stelz. Te na kue te ho, te na kue.
Kia ora. And tonight, these candidates will be vying to become the next councillor of the Tiawa Nui Maori Ward. But with every election, there's one thing stepping in their way, and that's your vote. Okay, and welcome to tonight's It's in the Ballot show here, live from the great city of Tooranga. How was everyone this evening? So we've got a good sign on there, okay. Sorry, my phone has decided it wants to do stupid things at the moment and I like it. Which is great timing when it does things, because it's like, it's like, it's finger pressing a button that it shouldn't be. Okay, so we've got these five candidates here who are vying for your first preference votes. So let's find out which candidate gets to kick off first, and we've got Hemi.
Kia ora.
You've got one minute on for your opening statements.
Ate maatau, mihikaona ki te tuakana, te nee te mihii mahana ki a kuea nairo. Ina manai noo, te na kautau katau. Ko Hemi Alastina au, no kunei, no tauanga moana, no naa ti fakaua huki, te na te mihii ki a kautau katau. I'm from here. My statement is basically starting with ko time ai te wa. The time has come for somebody like me to put my hand up and to make a difference and a positive impact for Tooranga Moana. My record, my track record, my credibility will show that I have done many things, both in the Moana and nationally and locally, to make a difference and a positive impact. So I stand on the credibility of the capability that I can bring to the table. And I'm really excited tonight to tell you a little bit more about that. I've been mentored by some of the best in Tooranga Moana, particularly Uncle Ki and Auntie Maria, Auntie Naro Mata. And tonight I wear my poppy proudly being mentored by the one and only Ta' Bom Gillies, who I carry proudly. Those are the people that have helped to get me where I am today and help me build the capability, the credibility, and importantly, the values that we must always take our people on the waka as we go on the journey. Te na tatau katau.
Thank you for that. Next up, Sware.
Kia ora, tatoa, tolofala vahuki, a morio riki te fari, heri te nee no kunei, as well as the beautiful islands of Samoa on my mother's side. I am a research and evaluation consultant and I write technical reports about how well things work, for whom and under what conditions. My campaign is Mearo Kuea Keteha O Hene Ahuhune, which is built on, my buzz is about supporting wahine Maori into governance. I think on balance, we've got leadership covered. I know we've got leadership covered in our marae spaces, in our iwi interests, but we don't have them in the governance space. So I stand, and I stand in all elections, Tooranga City Council and Western Bay, because that's my kapa papa, wahine into governance. Kia ora.
Kia ora. Thank you for that. Next up, Angie.
Ate na raku tautau katau, ko, o te manai ko tauanga tu moana, ko na te rami te iwi, ko naa ti ka te iwi naa tu kai ranga no gu hapu. Ko maasatu te waka, ko huma huma taua rami maari tapu ni marae, no mataki tokaia ni nai. I'm here and I'm standing, and I'm standing again. I stood in the first election in July 2024 with the intention of bringing more of Maori representation to the governance table. I was not successful in doing that, but I certainly was successful in gaining confidence and knowledge and understanding of the system or campaign. But more than that, I have a lot of, a lot to offer. I'm currently working for council. I work in the engagement space with a Maori strategic team and I've learnt a lot about our water services. So I've been doing that now for nearly 18 months. So I'm someone that's on the ground in the spaces. I have built relationships and I continue to do that. And the reason I have that work is because that is what my expertise is. I've done a number of governance roles across education, across health, and certainly across our Ahahe Fenua trusts and incorporations. I work on the ground in my marae, in all my marae, I'm on my hapu trusts. I invest all that I can in contributing what I have to offer to Tooranga Moana as manu fenua, but also recognising that we're not alone in this beautiful city of ours. We share this with many other Maori who have come to make this their home. And I interact with everyone in my, in the course of my lifetime through sports, through education. So really what I'm saying is that I learnt a lot the first time around. That hasn't deterred me. I'm ready to stand and give it all I have. I've got a lot to offer in terms of governance, Maori and being a wahine Maori. And I was to bring it tonight and hopefully expand on all of those experiences for you. Kia ora.
Thank you for that. Next up, David. You managed to unplug the microphone while you're at it.
Kia ora, tatoa, tifano, ko David Ratchima trust, ahoi ko mao Timanga, ko naiti rangi, ko naiti rangi nui, ko naiti pukina, ahoi. I'm standing here today in support, I've got to be honest, of these four. Well, someone's got to stand up for them alli. And I'm just glad to be here, guys. But I've got to be honest, my full supporters were the other four here. They're more, well, they've got more of a governance role than I have. But what I have got, I've spent the last 15 years behind the scene taking on government. My speciality was law. For me, that's where it counts. We can sit around and have courted all, all we like, but at the end of the day, for me, I believe in the law to back me up, no matter what table I sit at. Because that's what we're bounded by, statute. Kia ora, tatoa, finally, and I'm a hini.
Kia ora. Thank you for that. And last up, George, your opening statement.
Ate na kautau katau, ya kura ngachi ra mai nga kui a fari i te hiro mai ma ke tui ke to madiro ko George Ngatai tokuinua, maatiaua, naati mania poto naati maaki. Ete mihia tunei ki a kautau e fakapaho a tunei ki a kautau. Hey, Kia ora, George Ngatai, I'm pleased to actually be here to be one of the five candidates that are standing for Tiawa Nui by election, obviously here at Tooranga City Council. I had got a wee bit of experience in terms of local government, working for Auckland City and North Shool City Council, and saw the challenges that many Maori actually have in terms of engaging at a governance level. This seat has actually given us the opportunity to participate and be voted in by Maori for Maori to represent Maori views on Tooranga City Council. My experience at the moment is as the head of the Fano Water Community Clinic. That's a company that both my wife and I established from scratch, setting up one general practice in Auckland and stretching out to eight general practices from Kaio up into Tai Tukodo all the way down to Tuaiponamoo. So health and wellbeing's really been key to me. Giving back to our people affordable and accessible health, which I believe is something that this council can actually learn from. Making access to our people within the Tooranga City Council and also actually engaging with them on a regular basis. I've got some priorities that personally I would like to actually bring to the table, and that's actually community wellbeing and making sure that our people are well serviced within Tooranga. I'd also like to actually see better engagement, not only with Maori, but with obviously the tangata fenua here, because they're key to enable us to be accountable for our relationships between tangata tariti and tangata fenua. So I look forward to meeting you over the next few weeks. Remember, the election is taking place, by-election is taking place now. And over the next four weeks, you get to choose one of us to actually represent your views on the Tooranga City Council. Look forward to that. I'm George Ngatai. Look forward to your number one vote.
Okay, thank you for that. Okay, so let's get up to the fun part here, where we get to get the box questions. Now, if you probably remember from the previous It's in the Ballot season, we did about nine months ago. Each candidate, we go one by one, they pick up the boxes. Now, each candidate has two button cards. If you, if someone else picks a box and you want to answer that question, you use your button card and you raise your button card. So I sit there and know exactly where it is. And if you get a curly question you don't want to have, want to answer, you can defer it to one of your fellow candidates. Fingers crossed, we don't have that particular card getting used, otherwise some people might sit there and do it. So Naido, you get to have the fun part here. Thank you for letting us use your facilities here, it's quite nice. They've got comfy seats. I'd probably say one of the comfiest ones we've been at. So before we get to the questions, who are you to our viewers, particularly those who are not from Tooranga? So we can sit there and find out, because, you know, some of us might want to meet you afterwards.
Yena noa tatoa, ahoi, iu akiu in Tooranga, ahoi, iu ahoi, I'm taringa on my father's side. And my brother is from Philidjiau, Kersin, Farakani. Mihiala ki a kautau.
Can you hold your mic up a bit?
Local boy, two bit of this and this. Yeah, no, I don't answer questions after the show.
Okay, so let's kick up with the first question. George, you get to pick the first box number. What box number would you like? We've got up to 1 to 28.
Look, I'll pick number, number five.
And what card number have we got?
Card number I.
I. So I for India.
Question, will you be an advocate for our LGBT TQIA plus community?
Look, I think that's an adequate question to ask, because lots of people would probably want to ask me that question. I suppose for me, the LGBT community is just like women, it's just like Maori, it's just like disabled. They need to actually have a representative that views and voices their view on the Tooranga City Council. If and when that question is asked of me, I would do my best as a representative to view and voice the concerns that the community and the LGBT or others would actually have me present to the Tooranga City Council. So would I be of the advocate? Would I be a voice? I will have to be. Everyone will have to be. And so therefore, the answer would be yes.
Thanks for that. Okay, next, was it up is David? What box number?
Number three.
So for those at home, it's box number three.
Okay, box number three, card question Z, Z for zebra. Alterua New Zealand has a population represented by over 1,500 ethnicities, cultures and social identities. Studies have shown that diverse and inclusive societies both increase wellbeing and economic growth. How would you actively improve Tooranga Moana's seats in celebration of its diverse society?
Well, I believe you... Do you want to stand up? Whatever you would like to do. I believe we've got a hub down at the 17th Ave for Historic Village Museum. First place of contact for me would be actually down there to go and see the people that are established. So I could get a a more of an understanding of what they want and what they need. And then I'd be able to be able to say something. I've got to be honest, but that's the first thing, looking into cultural diversities. Because at the end of the day, regardless of who or what they are, it all, it's still coming down to under cultural understandings, regardless of who they are, whether they're gay or female. The most important to me is letting them speak and seeing what they say. Okay, Kia ora.
Okay, next up, Angie, what box number? So number 11.
Card number L. What strategies would you push to address the specific issues facing Maori in Tooranga Moana?
Kia ora for that. In my view, some of the key specific issues for Tooranga Moana, Maori is housing. And then quickly followed by, you know, the cost of living and everything that goes with that. So strategies that I will definitely focus on in that regard are ways to increase the opportunity for housing for Maori. In my view, some of those answers lie in enabling papukaia development to happen, in particular in spaces where we don't have the infrastructure already. So that would be my key strategy focus.
Get on button. Yep, use your button card, let's kick it in. Yep, that's good enough for me.
Look, I think that the thing for us is really looking at, as was said, the affordable housing. But better healthcare is something, whilst it's not a council responsibility, I think actually having accessible health services and appropriate health services for our people is really key. Economic opportunities for not only Tooranga, but especially for Maori business, because that there is something that grows our local economy. In terms of that, our local economy is really key for me and us to actually be able to support. The environment will probably be a priority for a lot of our people within, because being Maori, you know, the fenua is really key to us. The Moana is really key to us, and this has got to be certainly supported and engaged with by Maori. Maori business is something we've seen grow within alteruza economy, but it also can actually be something that we can support for Tooranga as well. So that's it.
Okay, Hemi, what box number?
The appropriate number, number 28. So, Naido, it's down the bottom right, 28 for the battalion.
Okay, card number K. How do you plan to foster meaningful partnerships between Tooranga City Council and hapu?
Yeah, great partai. I think what I would do first and foremost is build on the relationships that currently exist. Tarangapu is already in existence, that's got relationships happening. And then there's specific MOUs with most of the hapu that actually exist anyway. So whoever comes in on this Tiawa Nui ward seat, remembering it's an all-Maori seat, it really needs to find solutions and strategies and resources to power it up. I live in Matapihi and there's the Matapihi Land Use Plan that pretty much dovetailing into what Angie says, getting more houses along, but it's not powered up. Some of that lies back with our own hapu, powering up their resources, but predominantly, a lot of it lies with TCC. So you're sitting at the table as a voice of one of 10, but talking to your mates, partners around the table, saying we need to provide more resource, more focus, more strategy to really enable those things to happen alongside the hapu. Kia ora.
Okay, thanks for that. Sware, what box number?
Two.
And so that's the second vote that people put down if they choose someone else for a first preference. And remember, your number twos are just as important as your number one votes.
Card AB. What do you see as the main difference between Maori landowners and hapu in terms of their relationship with Tooranga City Council?
I think the access point to engaging with those entities and those groups need to be finessed out so that we know that the mechanism for engaging with those owners is done really, really well. So looking at high-quality engagement of the existing, of the existing groups that they have around Tooranga. I think that's really important. And always, like Hemi said, capitalising and extending what we've got to fold in the leadership of those entities.
Okay, gee, you're quick on doing questions. Oh, we've got a button from Angie. Yeah, I like that. Throw it in front of you so that we can see who's done the buttons.
So I'd just like to add to that. From my perspective, the main difference between a Maori landowner and the hapu is the hapu completely responsible to their members and to take back to our people, you know, the things that are important about the land of the hapu. The Maori landowner is completely responsible to their owners. And so there is just a different level of responsibility and therefore a different type of relationship is needed with TCC. But ultimately, in my view, it's about helping TCC to understand that difference and then to find ways to better support both the Maori landowners as well as the hapu in terms of land.
And we've got another button from Hemi.
I've got a button on this one because let me tell you that I was previously, in a previous career, worked for the council for 10 years, both as the rates manager, but more importantly as the ahu fenua Maori in charge of all things to do with Maori land within Tooranga Council alongside Kiran and Medadina and co. And so I swam and lived in this space for a while and there's some big differences here and we need to be careful with them. The Maori landowner, that's a property right. And there's a lot of Maori landowners in Tooranga that aren't even from Tooranga, that's a Maori landowner. But I think the real distinctness here is when it's multiply owned Maori land is against hapu ownership. So when you're doing something that's impacting on the environment and you go and talk to the owners of the land, that's a property conversation. And to be fair, it's not that much different than parkier ownership. Apart from Maori will have different values and views, but it's a different conversation with the hapu. That's to do with the mana and the environment. And we need to be really careful, because I've seen situations where council have made that problem and I bring experience to the table that won't let that happen. Kia ora.
Okay, we've now got a new order up. Angie, what box number?
23, please.
Oh, good. Now, that's definitely a prime number, 23?
Card number A. A for rev. Recent incidents highlight rangatahi and whanau not feeling safe in their own neighbourhoods. What will you do to ensure rangatahi feel safe in Tooranga Moana, especially public spaces?
Kia ora, nairo, and thank you for this question. I think it's really relevant for me to be answering around this question tonight. I've just come from a 10-week-long trial around, you know, a home invasion event that included more than 20 gang members. So I'm really acutely aware of the fear that people can have following, you know, instances of unsafe practices and unsafe behaviour. I think one of the key things is to encourage our rangatahi to know who they are, to understand where they come from and to build their strengths within. So building their resilience is going to help them to make good choices, to be in good spaces and to have good people around them. From a council view, you know, in support of those initiatives, it is things like having the social, you know, the safer communities types of groups that we can rely on and learn from and work with to help continually build the safe community around not only rangatahi, but all of our community.
Okay, next up, George, what box number? Oh, we've got a button first from David.
I believe we should have more input with the council. With the council. Yeah, Angie was right. It's getting to know who we are and what we are, but brought back to the marae. A lot of our things should be actually brought back to the marae, especially our rangatahi, so they know who they are or who we are. With the kapa papa of Tooranga City Council and support. We're coming into an area where it's being intensified with multicultural visitors or manu guri that don't understand who we are. And it's better that at least our rangatahi and our children that are preborn, born up in Tooranga, to me, are all our children. But we should be all going back through the schools to our marais, learning who we are and paka papa and who they are. That's the most important, giving them the identity, that way they know who they are. Where at the moment, I didn't tell you, and that was the same with me. When I didn't know who I was, I was just another marahoper, as far as I was concerned. But when you find out who you are and who we are, there's nothing that can replace it, no matter who you are. Knowing who you are and where you come from, that's important. I believe we should be taking our children back to the marae. Kia ora. Can I pass on the fire ask?
Oh, yes, but you're using up all your cards.
Oh, then I don't necessarily want to go.
Do I hear, George?
I think if you actually have a look at the rangatahi, which you feel is stacked. I mean, I was actually at a community here in Tooranga whereby it was probably more placified as a lower socio-economic community. And one of the things that I actually saw was one, they didn't have a community park that was close by. So they had to make do with what they had in their own neighbourhood. And the other thing was is that public transport was probably null and void, which means that from a council's perspective, and if there is a route for public transport, it's making sure that in our communities there is accessibility for rangatahi and whanau to be able to use a bus or engage or transport was available for them to use in and around their community. I think the other thing that we need to actually consider is rangatahi need to participate in a a community that looks, feels and sounds like them. And sometimes we actually have kaumatu, councillors, that come in and determine what's best for them. Give them the opportunity, whether it's by a youth council or a venue, a vehicle, to be able to do that. So that's my proposal.
Okay, now, box number, what box number you're picking?
Um, twenty-five.
Twenty-five. Oh yes, that's a great age. I think that's when my insurance excess comes down on my car insurance.
Card number S. Rangatahi want to be a part of the workforce, but the opportunities are limited. How will you work or partner with local businesses and industries to create better employment and career pathways for rangatahi?
Look, um, we work with the Ministry of Social Development to, uh, support rangatahi to get into jobs. Maybe education is not something that they're very successful in. So I, I think as a council, we've got to put a strategy together to support rangatahi to do and be and actually see an opportunity for them to succeed in and around Tooranga. I think participating with them and utilizing rangatahi advocates, I suppose, within Tooranga City Council to extract the information and the support that they require is one thing that I would actually support as a councillor. Uh, obviously, I'm only going to be one of, uh, many to vote on this. And it would be trying to actually engage with fellow councillors to support a ko'apaka that would actually enable rangatahi to be seen and heard and also to have, uh, a, a voice around the table. Um, it's supporting the development of a youth-focused, um, industries within Tooranga, uh, where rangatahi jobs would actually be seen as a place to support them to get the job, to retain the job and to actually excel in the job to get them into a management role. And it's also encouraging businesses, Maori and general businesses to say, hey, if we want to actually utilize rangatahi and get rangatahi working, then provide spaces in their, uh, business to actually do so.
Okay, uh, next up, David, what box number? Number eight. What's good about number eight?
My birthday.
Oh, it's the most Chinese back eight. Asian, Asian cultures are in love with eight, it's abundance. Chinese love eight.
It's good. How's your number? Card number 10. In October 2024, the council made the decision to comply with the Director General of Health Directive to fluoridate Tooranga's water supply. Does this align with the principles of Te Chiriti or Waitangi?
No, no, it doesn't. That's all I can say.
That's short, sharp and sweet. You've got 55 seconds to go.
I don't want to say anything else because it doesn't.
Okay, Hemi, what box number?
Number, number one.
Number one. Oh yes, the first number to put on your voting paper when you're voting.
Yes, one for Hemi.
Number one in your hearts here, Wauna. Uh, card number X. If elected, how will you ensure that you are working to benefit all of Tooranga Moana and not just your ward?
Great partai. Well, look, um, when you sit at a board and I'm an experienced governor, being put there in, in a, in a range of roles and you're there for the greater good. That's paramount. Um, we've got Rod here, he's the Tapaka ward member. Of course, he's going to be an advocate for Tapaka, but his decisions need to be for the benefit of all. But what we really need to do is, uh, is ensure that those decisions are not just good for Maori, that they're good for Tooranga Moana and they're good for iwi. So I, I will ensure that I'm out in the community and I am a community person, whether it's out in the general community or in the Maori community. We've got to listen and we're one of 10, so the decisions that I'll be making, um, are collective decisions and importantly, working together as Mahi says, as a team of 10. But you know, I fundamentally believe what is good for Tooranga Moana Maori is good for Tooranga Moana. We don't make decisions that aren't of a greater good. We are a collective people and if we make collective decisions, Tooranga Moana will prosper.
And we have button from Sware.
Um, if elected, I pledge 25% of the councillor's salary to go to the three iwi of Tooranga Moana to support Wahine and governance training. So whether that's through the Directors Institute, whether that, through that, whether that's through the Community Alteroa Group, um, that's up to them. So in the, in the stand and the fight to get Wahine into governance, I would support that. Uh, and just really see that as, uh, an investment in ensuring that Wahine Maori understand they have a role and they can lead, uh, good developments in the city.
Okay, Ange, Sware, what box number?
Ooh, uh, twenty. I would just like to discriminate, um, against odd numbers. So if the other contestants could please leave, uh, the even ones, Kia ora.
Well, before the 1975 general election, the voting age was twenty.
Oh, three.
Yeah, seventy-five, yeah, it was seventy-five when it changed.
Still twenty on the other side.
Well, in 1949, when my grandma, at 21, that was the first time she was allowed to vote. And she's still going around at 197 now.
Kia ora, Tata. Uh, card number J. What major project do you believe is essential for Tooranga City Council and what should be eliminated?
Uh, I think to add context to the question in terms of what should be eliminated, it's more, uh, it's more beneficial to understand what should be reduced or what should be prioritized in the interest of the city. And I, uh, so again, the council's decision is resource allocation and investment uh, for the benefit of the whole city. And I think that that is a conversation obviously that's guided by the various inputs from the council staff. And I wouldn't like to make a call on those things, um, in case I got that wrong. So I'm not up to date enough to be able to make a call on what I would cut or what I would keep. Um, but I would tell you that my process will be to look at what is there and what would benefit Maori better um, than other, uh, projects.
Okay, and we're due for another round and I'm just trying to get a different set of orders so we're not starting with the same person. Getting a bit disappointed with random list. Um, okay, David.
Number seven.
Number seven. Yes, another prime number.
Card number C.
Uh, which number, uh?
C, C for Caribbean.
Oh, that's a different one from Chara.
What is your utmost priority if elected?
Well, my, my, my utmost priority if elected, well, is to keep campaigning for more Maori to stand, uh, for the next election. Now, that's the most important. We only get one chance and it's best if we've got a team of five here. The most important is to make sure we keep going. Kia ora.
Okay, uh, we have button from Sware followed by Angie. Yeah, yeah, but Sware button first.
Also, my utmost priority is to focus on raising Maori enrolments on the Maori role. So it's really, really important that we, uh, make the, uh, gain while we can. Switch to the Maori role, get your stuff there, get yourself organised, go, um, to the marae and encourage other people who you know haven't voted. So we had a big million man march last year or this year. We need those million man marches to, million match, million man march to the vote and register themselves to vote. That's what we need to do. That's my priority.
Okay, Angie.
Kia ora. Well, my priority is to bring us together as a people, mana finua, tangata finua. So utilizing a ko'atahi tanga approach so that I can hear the voice of our people. And then once I understand that voice, it's to build those opportunities to continue to come together. It's to understand the needs of our people through those opportunities and through listening. It's to develop plans to meet those needs that they are going to be sharing and to continue to build those enduring relationships. So ko'atahi tanga is my thing.
Perfect. And just for those, a little bit of reminder, yes, uh, Tooranga will not be having a local, um, body elections this year, but the regional council still will be. So it's still equally important in October to get out and vote as well. Just remember, just because the city council ain't there, don't make sure you still focus on the regional council. Considering I don't fit there, actually get given much scrutiny myself. Uh, Hemi, what box number?
Number ten, number ten.
Card number M. How will you ensure your single voice is a strong and influential voice at the decision-making table?
Have we got the right question?
Card number M.
Oh, M for Mike, okay.
M for Mike.
Sorry.
I'll say that again, I'll, I'll do the question again. How will you ensure your single voice is a strong and influential voice at the decision-making table?
Great partai. Let me start that partai with my favourite saying, if you're not at the table, you're on the menu. For too long, Maori haven't been at the table and then the people around the table are deciding what's on the menu for Maori. So we need to be at that table. But my second part of that saying is when you get to the table, don't just go there and eat the kai. You need to go there and make impact. Because sometimes we make a lot of noise and say we need to be at that table and then we don't actually have impact. So I have the experience in going into mainstream organisations and making an impact. Whether at the board table or the executive table where it's a predominantly, um, pakia group. But the thing that you need to do is build relationships. Auntie Mari is famous saying, uh, uh, business is not about relationships, it's all about relationships. We need to build relationships with those people around the table so that they see our worldview, we see theirs and together we plan a good future. So you've got to be doing the hard yards and making relationships around the table.
Okay, next up, Angie, what box number?
Box fifteen please.
Fifteen. Ah, yes, the, uh, who, who got their driver's licence here at fifteen? Put your hand up and audience as well. I mean, I, I'm one of these lucky ones in that box. Thanks for picking that number, Angie. We get to find out who got their licence as soon as they could.
Who got their licence after fifteen but they were driving anyway? Card number H. What is your stance on Te Chiriti?
I'm standing to uphold Te Chiriti, that is my campaign, um, that's the basis of my campaign. Uh, Te Chiriti I honour as our founding document. In particular, it's the principles that bred me. Um, I think they are useful and important for everything we do. Uh, partnership protection and participation are going to be crucial and have been crucial. Are currently crucial and continue to be whether our government do something with Te Chiriti or not. So my stance is Te Chiriti is here to stay, it's important. It, it is the reason we are all here. Um, and I stand to uphold all of those principles.
Okay, George, what box number?
Uh, number twelve.
Card number W. If elected, who do you believe you represent and how do you plan to maintain a clear vision of sight?
Uh, well, it's very clear that the representation for me would be as a elected member for Tiawanui is the, uh, engagement with Maori and Maori constituents. Uh, they're the ones that actually voted me and so certainly my response would be to support them as best as I can. To do that, uh, it's about having regular hui with them and creating a, uh, vehicle for them to engage appropriately with myself. And then also, uh, advocate on behalf of Tooranga City as well. But the thing that I would want to actually do is, uh, work alongside iwi and hapu uh, to ensure that their voice is also supported as a elected councillor. And then to actually, um, provide them with the support to have them around the table as well as voting members. And the last one would actually be to stay focused on the priorities that I've been given by the constituents to, uh, advocate for around the table. So that's probably, uh, the, the key three things for me, uh, for this question.
Thank you for that. Okay, off for it. We'll do our last round of box questions. Hemi, you get to go up first. And if you've got any buttons now, this is the round to use them in because we're going to get hard hitting questions afterwards. At least we're not in the building that has the 13th floor.
Card number N, N for Navy Moa. How do you plan to address housing and affordability for the Maori community?
Oh, hipataipai. So, um, this is right up my alley. Um, look, first and foremost, let me tell you some statistics. I don't know if it's changed, but in 2022, Tooranga was the, um, Tooranga as a city was one of the fifth least affordable city in the world. Tooranga is also the least affordable city in the country because of the million dollar cost of housing. So yes, you go up the papua and you see all the development, you go into the lakes and you see all the development. You go into our Maori communities and you see by raw. So we need to find, I listened to the Tangata Finua Collective yesterday and the chair, independent chair, Anthony Fisher, said we need a circuit breaker. Tooranga Council can't do it on our own, but we can go out and look at what people like Willie Daho are doing around the country. Changing the face, talking to government, getting access to putia, talking to land trusts to make a difference. And council changing some of their policies because the impact fees on our houses are just drastic. We're in a crisis, whanau, we've got a cost of living crisis and every figure for Maori in terms of income in the census has confirmed that we're at the wrong end. So we need some circuit breakers. It's not easy, but we really need to get together to make that impact.
Okay, next up, George, what box number?
Uh, sixteen.
Sixteen. Uh, the current age to your driver's licence. Just for those who need a reminder. And I believe, um, how, um, some people want the voting age too.
Voting age to sixteen.
Some peo-, uh, well, yeah, some, some young people want that to happen.
Goodbye. Card number D. What is your history in representing Maori interests in Tooranga Moana?
Uh, look, I, I suppose for me, it's been probably more, oh, sorry, it's been probably more as, uh, uh, an advocate from a health perspective. Um, we during COVID were the provision or provided, uh, support around masks and, and, and things that, one, we got access through it from Auckland, uh, but two, we were able to actually distribute our, our excess supports down here to Tooranga Moana. Uh, on a more recent, um, level, uh, through our acquisition of, uh, a radio frequency that is more focused on community radio, uh, the station that we actually have gives the opportunity to speak more to our pakia constituents around information and advocacy for Maori and doing it in, uh, Te Reo that they are familiar with. Which I think is actually quite key because Te Reo Maori radio stations are key for us to engage with our own people. But the ones that we need to get together further support for are those that are non-Maori speakers to inform them about what we stand for. So those are the two things that come to mind. The other is obviously being a trustee of land, uh, in and around the community.
Okay, next up, Sware.
So that's, this is an opportunity to humbly show off my CV. Um, look, I've been a claimant for the Tooranga Moana Naiturangi Contemporary Claims and I've done an extensive report alongside Jaulin Patoa on the rating of Maori land and the impacts where the cost and the benefit should lie. Because we provide all our own reserves, urupara most of our community facilities, yet we're paying for everybody else's. So I've been a claimant, I've been the CEO of Tiawanui Hokapak with our iwi trusts and incorporations, making global and local impact on the stage, um, with Zespri. I've taken 55 of our growers over there to experience the world of growing in Japan. And as a result of that, a lot of people have come back and co-invested more in the kiwi fruit. Jobs come as a result of that. I sit on a number of Maori trusts and incorporations, Naitukai Rangi, Na Mano Incorporated, where we're making, uh, an impact. And I've taken rangatahi over to Stanford in Silicon Valley alongside Tooranga Moana to see the world, to see where that, that impact really is. And I've also taken our koumatu over to Radatonga because they sit on the pi, do all the work for nothing and given them rest. So I live and breathe and work in this space and today I was celebrating with our Na Mukapuna. And Mukapuna decision is the 40th anniversary of our, um, of, um, um, Matapihi Koangariel. Kia ora.
Okay, Sware, what box number?
Box number four please.
Card number F, F for Freddie.
Yeah, I like that one.
Yeah, Kia ora. How do you propose to positively promote Tiawanui ward as a positive move for Tooranga Moana to those who stand strongly?
to those who stand strongly against it?
Uh, I think essentially proving credibility in the role and how you represent the seat and the way that you support partnerships around the table. So you join a table of 10, being complimentary and working in a complimentary way, but also having enough, holding enough will to speak truth to power around what the needs and interests are for Maori and how they can be best served by the other nine. So specifically, you're there to represent the interests of Maori and you'd need to do that in a way that encourages the other nine councillors to come along and get on board. So there are some real horror stories in Tooranga where the water runs past the marae, didn't come to the marae, where the sewage treatment goes past the marae and then dips around the corner, but the marae isn't on that. That is specifically the outcome of someone not at the table backing your interests. I am assertive to a point of sometimes being uncomfortable, but I'm also honest and able to work in a positive way with others.
Okay, Angie, what?
We know one too.
What box number?
Uh, box number nine, please.
V. Card number V for Vendetta. If you've seen the movie. In your own words, what is the purpose of the Maori seat and is it really required? I'm looking forward to this answer.
So Maori wards, they provide one way for Maori to have a voice and be represented in local government, decision-making, and it's similar to dedicated electoral seats in parliament. Successful Maori ward candidates become councillors and have a particular responsibility to represent people of Maori descent and to bring forward their views and aspirations. However, they also represent the entire community. So with that in mind, in my own words, the purpose of the seat is to bring the voice of Maori, but it is really required because that voice is currently not there. And that really is the key of the seat. Kia ora.
Yes, can I chuckle my button?
You chuckle the button because this will be your last chance.
I believe we should have had that Maori seat a long time ago. There's Tonga Tafenua, Tafenua Maori, it's a slap in the face we haven't even, we aren't even at the table. And we're sitting here tonight talking about this. That's all I want to say, guys. We should have been there a long time ago. Kia ora.
Okay, and David, you get the last box for the question box round tonight. What box number? Oh, yes, the voting age in 1949 when my grandma voted for the first time and also the first year that Wahine Maori got elected into parliament of Itiraki Ratna. That's all right. One remembers his vetaturakati Sullivan. But, you know, I mean, hey, one was a minister, one was just an MP. Kapai. Card number Y. What is your strategic vision for Tooranga City? For example, what will the city look like in 10 to 15 years' time?
Not being rude to our Maori over there, but in 10, 15 years' time, I want to see 10 Maori sitting around that table, to be quite honest. Well, the more Maori, the more people we are sharing our culture with, well, with our Manu Hiri, I call them. I don't like saying we're Pakia. That's what I'd like to see. It's all Maori and giving our culture and giving our Pakia friends, our Manu Hiri, a sense of being Maori themselves. Because I know a lot of Europeans are in a Pakia. They love us. They love to be Maori. And I believe that's our job is to respect their wishes also. Okay, Kia ora.
Okay, thank you for that. Okay, we're going to take a, it was meant to be 10, but we're only going to do a five-minute break because we started late. So we will see all of our candidates and our audience, both online and in studio, back in five minutes' time, ready for hard-hitting questions. Um, mute me, please. Oh, good. Okay, I've heard that come through the record. Okay, so let's get ready for hard-hitting questions. So, right. Congratulations. You get to see both the old hard-hitting questions one that got played second and the new hard-hitting question music that doesn't have a copyright for each other. Or, no, shall we just say, losing advertising revenue? Because we're trying to sit there and get into advertising revenue and this is more of an in-house conversation than an audience conversation. So hard-hitting questions here are the questions that are most important, that we have to get answers from all the candidates. Now, just a reminder to candidates, you can't use any button cards because everyone's answering them. And you can't use the defer cards because everyone's answering them. So just to get that going through on there. But let's kick off with hard-hitting question number one. Hard-hitting question number one. Yes. How will you ensure that you fairly represent the voice of all hapu, iwi and marae without letting your own affiliations create bias? And let's kick off with David first.
That's going to be a hard one because I affiliate to the whole law. I've got to be honest. I believe. Yeah, I'm not racist.
I won't call it racist. Might be biased to your particular own iwi.
I think you've got to say represent all hapu, iwi. And marae. No. I've got no answer for that, but to be quite honest.
Okay, George. How will you ensure that you fairly represent the voices of all hapu, iwi and marae without letting your own bias, affiliations create, no, your own affiliation create any bias?
Look, it's hard representing Maori because everybody wants you to sort of speak on their behalf. I suppose for me, it's taking everyone's requests to the table appropriately, being able to present it at the table and being able to support it and engage with the fellow councillors around the table to say why they should be supporting the kapa papa for each whanau, hapu and marae. I think if we actually look at it from representing everybody that comes from whanau, hapu and marae, you won't get to get in trouble. So it's just taking all that information to the table and doing your best to represent them.
Okay, Hemi.
Yeah, that's a good question. I think we need to drill right down to the fact that this is a Maori seat, not a hapu and iwi seat. So in fairness, you're representing all Maori, but as we said, and I'm sorry if we're using you as another example, Rod, you represent the papa and then you represent the city. So you represent all Maori. Yes, if some of these people sitting around here have strong affiliations to certain hapu and iwi and that's why you have a conflicts and a declaration. But you ensure that you're transparent and you're authentic and you have integrity. Because you'll always be challenged, "Didn't you do this for yours?" But that's the way we operate. If we are really transparent on what we do and make decisions collectively and remembering your only one voice. So I actually think some of the pokes will be sitting around the table, much like I'd be saying to Rod and saying, "Take the papa hat off and look at for the collective." Someone might be able to say to me, "Take your hapu hat off and look at the collective." But if we're open, transparent and with integrity, then we'll make decisions without any bias.
Perfect. Angie.
Kia ora. The way that I will ensure, you know, that I fairly represent everyone is in the first instance, I understand governance and my key role there is to bring an open mind. So with my open mind on the matter, my next key role is to ensure that I make decisions in the best interests of everyone. And so that's how I will approach it regardless of my affiliations. You know, being affiliated doesn't mean you always support what our, what your people want. But ultimately, I'm bringing the key tenants of governance to the table to ensure that everyone's interests are being considered.
Okay. Sware.
This is a great question for me and I've thought about it in detail. So my policy platform within my campaign rests around the concepts of fenua, fa'aka papa and wai. So fenua is obviously anything in the land and the transport space. Wai is about the water. So, you know, that's what councils, that's what councils do too. And then fa'aka papa is about culture and heritage. So in terms of a process and to answer the question, so it would be based on fa'aka papa or the site. So wherever the issue was, I would directly engage with the hapu. Well, I wouldn't, but I would ensure that the primacy is given to the resident hapu of that area and then other voices were folded in. I disagree with the collapsing of all the hapu into the concept of all hapu. So when it comes to hapu discussions and decisions, there is an order, an existing order based on fa'aka papa to that area that should determine the engagement. I would steward that process alongside the other nine councillors and ensure that the staff of the council act appropriately or accordingly to that.
Kia ora. Thank you for that. Now, let's kick off with hard-hitting question number two. What is your history in representing Maori interests in Tooranga Wana? Or what successful outcomes have you contributed to for the people of Tooranga Wana? Sware.
I made a distinction in this question. The top question around Maori interest is to whether you were talking about what they were, what Maori are interested in as a people. So I support kapahaka, I support initiatives and fundraisers that go on. Because if I can't give time, I will donate money and support those things. But my primary vehicle for supporting Maori interests has been to stand in local elections. So I returned eight years ago to raise a mukapuna, help a mukapuna. And since then, I have stood in every local election. I was the first Maori to stand for a mayor in the Western Bay plenty. And I will continue to stand until the wahine line on all local governments are at least three, four deep. That's how I've held Maori interests in Tooranga Wana.
David.
Well, the only thing I've done so far, I've got to be honest, is implemented our people for Maori inclusion in the mental health area. Well, Ministry of Health advocated that when our people sit through the court system, that's where they must have Maori representation sitting beside them. Ministry of Health and the Kopa Papa acknowledge all that. That's all I've got here, guys. Kia ora.
Okay, next up, Hemi.
Yeah, I've covered a lot of this, so I'm going to add, "and". And I have been the chairman of the Tooranga Moana Tonga Collective, Finua Collective, now Naunas Toorangapu. And I've sat at the council table as a member of the Tooranga Moana Standing Committee alongside council. And I've sat on the Smart Growth Collective Growth Committee as a Manu Finua representative. And I've sat in a number of other interests representing, representing Tooranga Moana. I've sat on the CCO, it's a council-controlled organisation, as a, as a representing interest of Tooranga Moana. That was Tooranga City Aquatics Limited. So I've had extensive experience representing Tooranga Moana. The outcomes are quite a few. This morning, I was at a hui talking about the Maori blueberry orchard on Mataki, Matakana, sorry, at Mataki having that hui. And so I was right at the beginning when we developed that, that's creating use of our land on Matakana, that's creating jobs for our people and that's creating a collective together to do things. And the collective that I was instrumental in or leading Ta'awenui Hokapak has created a number of outcomes for our people. While I'm talking about outcomes for our people, most of you will know that I led a hikoi up or a fundraiser of Molo for Mikhaideh that raised nearly forty grand. That not only got putier for Mikhaideh's whanau, but it got our people active and it got our people back to our moana. Four years earlier, I did the same for Innocence Henry, one of our sek whanau from Matakihi. So I bring outcomes, I bring people together that contributes to Tooranga Moana.
Thank you for that. Angie.
Kia ora. I do have a history in representing Maori interests. I would say it begins in the eighties and nineties where I participated actively in formulating our Lopati Plan for Ngatihie. Through to the 2000s, I was crucial and integral in developing the foundation stages of the Ngatirangi education strategy. Moving on from there, I have contributed to all of the schools of Tooranga Moana and their strategic development, their strategic planning, their governance role. Moving into disabilities and the area of health, I currently contribute and have always contributed to the sector through lived experience in my whanau and now in the governance role. So I'm giving back to the areas that have contributed to my life. In terms of successful outcomes, the development of those strategies and education are still in play and very much alive and very much achieving and continue to achieve good outcomes for Rangatahi, in particular in Mount College. But overall, my, my outcomes really come down to me being on the ground. You know, I contribute in every way I can. I'll pick up a tea towel, I'll go to a boardroom and I'll do everything in between. It's what I do, it's what I've done, it's what I continue to do regardless of the hat I wear and the role I might be in. Kia ora.
Oh, thank you. Okay, George.
Look, it's really interesting when you're brought up, when you're brought up on different sides of your whanau. Nataiu is where I was actually born and bred. And so therefore, I always actually lived there. Yet my grandfather is actually from Motiti Island. And so therefore, we always actually came this way to Motiti. And obviously to Tooranga, it's the Matahaide family are quite active within the struhe. I've always actually supported marae, whether it's actually been around the age here in Tooranga Moana, whether it's actually been via health services and the delivery of health support services across the city. And also within broadcasting and allowing us to actually have a voice that engages with the Tonga Tatariti community. So I suppose what I can bring to this community is the experience of one, business, of governance and of community planning experience with different councils that I've worked with over the various years. So I'm, I'm looking forward to actually being able to bring that skill back to Tooranga and utilizing it in this position should I be elected.
Okay, thank you candidates for that. Now, let's get on to hard-hitting questions number three. What will you do to ensure you influence the decisions made at the decision-making table? Okay, and Hemi, you get to start off first.
There's a number of things I'll do, but first and foremost, work hard. There's a lot of work to done, so you've got to earn the respect of those around the table. And as we've said, it's a team of ten. So they need to respect you, but you need to have done your work. You need to know what you're talking about and you need those other nine to go, yes, this person is bringing the skills, the commitment to the table to make good decisions. I spoke about it earlier, I will make, build relationships and build respect. Because you're only one voice and of, you know, the saying that I said keeps going. You need to be, but you need to be a strong voice, a committed voice. And what I will bring is, and something I probably should have said earlier, Maori are used to starting from behind. You know, we talk around this equity one and we're always starting from behind the start line. We're doing it again, unfortunate circumstances this time. But I will make sure that I start running. Because you need somebody that's going to pick it up. We don't have a year, we don't have a long time. But you know, fundamentally, I'll ensure I work hard and basically earn the mana of those people that put you there.
Okay, Sware.
My response to this question is I intend to count it. So I intend to count it and then qualify whether the actions of the council, nine plus this one, are made in the interest of Waireki constituents. So each motion, each area that we attack, that we approach, sorry, well, I'll be looking to count. So I'm going in with my professional head on as an evaluator. I'll be determining what high-quality engagement looks like for a council. And then I'll be measuring the metrics on that. And then also being able to measure how well the outcomes were delivered for the particular population, which in my case is the Ta'awenui Ward Rep would be the Waireki voter. So I intend to count it, whanau, I intend to count the good decisions that this council makes for within alongside myself and the other nine.
George.
I think for me, it's quite clear, one, you're going to be one voice of ten. And two, you've got to actually advocate for the people that you actually represent. But three, you've got to actually build good relationships. Because unless you have the votes, which is five plus one, then nothing you actually bring to the table that represents your constituency is going to pass. And so it's building relationships, ensuring that my colleagues, pakia, are actually comfortable with the decisions they're going to be making. That's going to support our constituents that we are having, that have elected us to, to represent. Two, it's also actually making sure that all Maori voices are going to be heard around the table. And three, it's going to be making sure that Tooranga is going to actually benefit from me sitting around the table. I think if it's good for Maori, it's good for Tooranga. And that's going to be the view that I'll bring to the table over the next eighteen months.
Okay, David.
Well, I suppose the most important for me was getting the skill sets of those other nine at the table first. Seeing what specialities each and every one of those members around that table have before I can actually dig in and influence decisions at the table. First and foremost for me is I've got to know each and every one of my members' skill set before I actually prepare accordingly. That's the most important. That way I will be able to know what's happening then and how to progress the decisions here before I even open my mouth.
Okay, Kia ora, but Angie.
Kia ora. What I will do to ensure that I influence the decisions at the table is I'll be prepared. I'll seek to understand the information in front of me. I will then seek to know the voice of our people so that I can, you know, utilise what's available to me to influence the decisions, all based on the voice of our people. But I think the key, the key aspect here for me is to be prepared and to be able to communicate that so that I can understand from my constituents what they want. With that, go in and influence through all of the mechanisms of governance, in particular through relationships. So I already have relationships with all of the councillors. I've built those over time myself and I just continue to respect those and continue to build on those.
Okay, thank you for that. Now, we seem to be, for starting off being behind, we're now running ahead of schedule. We're doing quite good on that one. So let's kick off with closing statements on why the voter for the Ta'awenui Ward should give you their number one vote and we start with Sware. Who, I don't know, I don't know if that was convenient off the random list order generator.
Okay, love it. You should give me your number one vote because you support wahine into governance and you understand that we can play and contribute to the decisions that are made in the city. You should give me your number one vote because I am not in the job, I'm not in the race for the mana, the money. I'm in it for the mahi and I can do the mahi. You should give me your number one vote because because it's important to pick someone who will represent and do the work that needs to be done, who's assertive and honest, but also can handle managing relationships. Let's be honest, it's Tooranga City, whanau, we're in for the fight. We're in for the fight of our lives. We're in for the fight to get our whanau enrolled to vote and we need to win this fight. We go to a referendum in December. We are tenuously holding this seat and I would like to be someone, the person in that seat to hold it for us. Thank you.
Okay, David.
Well, you should vote for me because I'm a Maori. That's the most important. But at the end of the day, guys, I'll be honest, when it comes to sitting down and talking with the chiefs, that's my best speciality. When it comes to talking, I'm not very good. It's what I write on pieces of paper that come through.
Okay, Angie.
Kia ora. I humbly ask you to consider giving me your vote. I'm ready. I've been preparing myself for a long time beyond the initial election. I made a commitment that I would continue to drive into governance and reach the heights that I can. I've been on that journey now for the last seven years. And on that journey, I've picked up huge skill and ability to work in this space. Not only that, I'm currently in council. I've got current relationships, I've got current knowledge of what's happening across all of council. And I have relationships in all of those spaces. And in addition to that, I come from a long line of Tukuna who fought for our people, who fought to keep the land that we stand on. And I'm honouring that tradition and intent. So I am ready, I am willing and I am able. And actually, I am the right person for this role.
Okay, Hemi.
Kia ora, whanau, I better stand up for this last one. So I'm standing on four Cs. I'm standing on capacity. I have the time and the energy and I'm excited to be able to offer myself for this role because you need to be able to have the capacity to do it. Secondly, I'm standing on community. I'm connected to this community at all levels. And not just in the Maori level. I've sat at some of the biggest boardrooms in the commercial space around this place and around the country. And so I bring that community connection both on the ground and around the boardroom. So connection is really important into the community. The third C that I bring is capability. My CV will show that I have extensive experience in a governor and this is a governor's role. This is important that we stress that this is a governor role and you need experience. Just this week coming, I'm doing the Advanced Directors course in Auckland to show that I'm at the top level of governance and I will continue to learn. And my CV will show that I've studied and I've worked hard. So I have the capability and the fourth C is commitment. I give you my commitment, whanau, that when I lean in, and those that know me will know when Hemi leans in, he goes for it, he gives you a hundred percent and he's committed and his track record will show a commitment of getting shit done and making a positive impact. And I implore you to go out and talk to anyone that's worked for me alongside me, who I've worked with or sat at the table and ask what impact I've made. So whanau, we've got to vote, we've got to make an impact. First and foremost, get on the roll. Second, vote. Three, vote strategic. Don't vote for me because I'm your relation. That's helpful, but importantly, vote for me because I have the skills to not let Tooranga Moana down, number one. And if you are going to vote for your whanau, give me number two. Kia ora, tato.
Okay, George.
Kia ora, everyone. I'm George Gnatay. I stand here as the Ta'awenui Ward candidate for Tooranga City Council. And I bring with me experience for the past thirty years in council planning, community leadership and delivering essential services. I understand the importance of collaboration, of transparency and making decisions that reflect the needs of our community. I believe Tooranga is an incredible, has a credible potential by supporting sustainable growth, investing in community wellbeing and strengthening partnership with our own Tonga Tataru. We can build a city that's inclusive, resilient and vibrant for our whanau and our tamariki and our mukupuna. I need your vote, that's number one. I will work tirelessly to get your vote and represent you and ensuring your voices are heard around the Tooranga City Council table. Together, we can make a positive difference for Ta'awenui and all of Tooranga. Kia ora, no tato.
And thank you for that for candidates for the closing statements. Now, just a little bit of housekeeping because I've been called out for disappointing from there from Robert Coe. I would like to set the record straight. You're disappointed your questions did not appear on the show, but your questions were in the question sheets in there. One of the questions did appear on the show, but both questions were reworded to work better, which is what happens in that form as we do reserve the right to reword them into better questions. Which question that didn't get picked out of the box that was in the show was question T, which was still with fluoride in there and does that lie with the principles of the Tatariti of Waitangi? So I'm sorry that you're disappointed that I kept my word. But hey, just like to sort of point that out there because I don't like being called a liar when it happens. So that's just something I'd like to make clear on there. If you want to call me out and tag me personally on Facebook on that, I'm going to respond to it as you've dragged it into the live section. When they are live, I'm responding to it and I've kept my word and I'm proud I've kept my word over that. You know, it's a shame the other question, I don't think the other question came out of the box, but I'm not sure which is you, which was, or question you, which is in there. Okay, so while we've got back to my little calling out people, let's get back to the fun part of thanking the people for making the show happen. I'd like to thank Nick, who's on the editor desk in studio, Brody, who is behind the cameras, who's here for making it happen, Stacy, who is doing the remote editing from Wellington. Thank you for being part of tonight's show. Thank you for Nido for joining, being my question host. And thank you to Tony for helping arrange this venue again. And it's absolutely loving, love, love working with the people up here and really enjoy it. Just for those who are wanting to know, we are a small funded organisation. So feel free to jump, drop off into our email, give a little page to help make 2025 local bodies a bit of a success. We're looking at getting, I think it's about a hundred and ten two-hour shows. It's going to be quite a bit of a trek over a seven-week period. We did, we have had to drop one council, but that council, we've decided it wasn't actually going to benefit the voters for that particular one in week eight. So there, if you're, if you're in the studio here for the audience, thank you for participating. And here, if you want to, I did bring my business as a Zepos machine if you'd like to help. And I would also like to thank our broadcasting partners, Paul, the other one, and also BFG Podcast for also broadcasting the show across the many different platforms that helps get our word out to more voters. And for those who are watching, feel free to subscribe to all of our channels on YouTube. We are, what is it, eighty-one subscribers away from getting YouTube partnership, which means we can earn means we can earn some money from some ad revenue. And the viewers can start putting in super chats. So, yeah. Candidates, thank you for coming. Great meeting, a great bunch of people. Thank you for working with us with the late start. One of the things that happened tonight was we had a critical hardware issue of our signal boosters that allow our cameras to talk to the computer. They were left in Wellington, so I had to go to Bunnings and brought them. And can I thanks Bunnings Mount Mombanui for being open, for making sure this show is a success tonight, even though they are a Australian company. But sometimes, sometimes it's just you've got to do with what tools you've got to get. So, for those who also follow us on our normal Sunday programme, the Autopaper Podcast, we will be doing another marathon episode this Sunday on the gene technology bill. And we will be working out what sort of show that we're going to be doing. Apparently, the House went to urgency this week again. So, we're going to have to try and trawl through to find out what interesting piece of legislation is to bring you for our eight and 9pm hours. Thank you for watching. Let's give a big round of applause to our candidates and our team. And we will see you all back for the excellent development for Local Bodies 2025 and for the Autopaper Podcast. We'll see you back on Sunday. Have a good evening.